Good morning.
Good thanks.
Yep.
I believe in the United States of America and to the Republic which is that one nation under God and it is all we live in.
Morning, everybody. Good morning. I will follow the order. We have a forum. I take motion to approve the agenda in a minute. One for second.
One second.
All in favor, I.
Alright.
Bye. Close? Alright, more rich, more than. Uh.
Couple. I guess maybe one question. I know we've got this hiring thing going on. We still use part-time mower. Then we still pay to bring part-time mower guys in.
That's something every year.
Right, and as of now, when we transfer, when RC retires after tomorrow, when we bring Lynn in, we're not gonna replace them until we kind of know where their name kind of settles out. So if we're okay with that, I know, I know Mike wanted to get, you know, notify a couple of guys if they still want to come back, so.
Yeah, I think we gotta, gotta happen again.
Well, I, I'm still kind of.
They're just part-time.
I'm just kind of juggling around the idea of how dry we are yet. Will we, number one, have a lot to mow? Number two, with the dry, does it's hard to maintain the gravel road without moisture? Are we gonna be as busy doing some of those other things that we would normally, that we can use our own guys to mow, which we probably could, right? Just to have the, the opportunity, if we need to bring them in, then I wanted to kind of make sure it was okay to do that.
Please let Teresa know.
Well, no, you'll know when we do.
The same ones, I'm assuming?
Yeah, yeah. And then I've been going through, we have to, uh, turn in our STP applications, which is our federally money for paving, and I've been trying to work out the budget a little bit more where we're sitting right now. Our, our dogwood projects in for letting April, I believe it is. And beyond that, we're, we're in the, in the red for our part-time market account. And I've been trying to figure out how to do Warbler four hundred and tenth, and then in fiscal twenty-seven, I've got one oh five plan to go to Carpenter. And hopefully trying to get two million dollars of STP money to do that. But even when we do that based on estimates, I'd have to not do Warbler, not do four hundred and ten. Even if I do one oh five and fiscal twenty-seven, I don't have enough money to even do that. So we're looking at a kind of a drought on doing any paving for the next three years, just to afford to do one stretch of roads. I didn't know. I, I'm gonna try to work some, some numbers through and maybe, maybe move some things around, but I'm still trying to figure out. We've got about, uh, a little over a million dollars in our STP that were allocated. So we've got some money there, but to do one oh five, the way we've done one oh five on other pieces, it's gonna cost, I mean, I've estimated around six million dollars to do that. And then two million of that's coming from the STP. If we can get the two million from it, um, kind of bite off more than we can chew at that, and they allow us to go negative in that once in a while, but if the rest of the counties agree to it, but just so you know, I'm trying to figure out a way to get some paving done because, but we, we are in, and even when we do, even if we could find a way to not do those other two and get one oh five and twenty-seven, we're in a drought after that, too. We're, we're spin ahead so far that we will be doing something for quite a while. So we've got to figure out something. And I don't know. I know there's always the opportunity to use TIF, but we kind of need to figure out where we're headed from there. But I mean, we're good for next year's projects, but I'm trying to put twenty-five together, and right now, I'm not putting any paving in twenty-five because we, if we're trying to save up for other projects, we need to have the money there. So.
Are you at least using up our current tip?
That's, that's set up different. That's for other projects. Yeah, we're trying to get some little other bridges pushed through, so.
Yeah. Well, we got this road. We're committed. We have to find a way to keep them on somewhere.
Yeah, right. So I just wanted to give you a heads up where the, 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 we gotta have our budget turned. I gotta have the STP application turned in. And I'm gonna turn it in anyway, and if it doesn't happen, we can keep picking that. Just because we put the application in, it's for fiscal twenty-seven. If we see things aren't working out, we can still kind of, but when my balance gets up to a million dollars, they want me to start spending it on, on other, on, on projects. So it's a matter of where we're at. And, and our allocations for that, that funding were reduced, too. So we've got some counties making cuts in what they're asking for in that, too. So it's, it's hitting everybody. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on where we're at still, because I gotta have the application turned in by, I think it's the twenty-second of March. And then, you know, my, my state budgets do the fifteenth. Just kind of giving you heads up on where we're at with trying to plan.
Yeah. Four, four and East of Kimson?
Yeah.
Where you're thinking? Oh, into the.
Just, yeah, yeah. It's a short stretch. That's like a million dollar project. If we do it like we did the other ones, and then Warbler was like a two and a half million dollar project. If we do the Colton Place or Psycho, but we.
Oh, do that all the way?
Yeah.
All the way. But that north, that north mile and a half or whatever.
Well, and the guys have done a really good job of, of getting a better ride out of it when they did the Dura Patcher. Coleman Lynn did a really good job getting ride back on it. So but it's so oxidized that I don't know if there's something, maybe we, I don't know, we can stretch it out and fog seal it or something, you know, you can. But I don't know. That's just a Band-Aid.
Yeah.
No bigger problem.
So it's a do like they do the interstate, but the.
Well, we're not doing that. I don't, I don't trust that.
I know.
Year, too, and they've got their flanks tearing up, so.
Sometimes these Band-Aids cost you more in the long run.
A fog seal is more or less just a, a rejuvenator, I guess, of the asphalt. It does that. Fixer, we get, but it's got a good ride, and so we're, we're happy with the ride. It's just that it's not gonna last forever.
Right.
So just kind of giving you heads up on where we're at forecast-wise and paving. Well.
Yeah.
I didn't get a chance to talk to any architects. I'm still closing off some of their projects yet, but I'm getting closer.
Good. Um. I did chat with Jason Peterberg a while back about that. Um, he said you don't necessarily have to hire an architect or like there's some engineering firms that work with architects and they can get them in, because there's some architects that like to build time halls.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, they want.
I don't think there's one I've worked with.
Bricks and sods and all this stuff and, and it's, yeah.
We're, we're, I, my, my idea is a stick-built building.
Sure.
But just to help with layout, so. I don't plan on.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't, we don't need a, a brick and mortar building at all.
No. Anything else for Rich?
Nope.
No.
Yeah.
Drainage. Uh, fucking stand forms. I'm ready. Listen, the drainage planes.
Second.
There's your second. Hearing none, all in favor, I? Close? So I wouldn't have any other picture. Regular. Regular claims. Yes, look through them. Any questions or comments on? Their motion to approve? There's a sort of, yeah, one second. All in favor, I?
I.
I suppose. Here is. A report. Sheriff for, they're motion to approve the sheriff.
I'm making motion for the sheriff for a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? One favor, I?
I.
Close? Here. Is there any favor? Would you go to your salary change? Uh, engine office moved one Butler to Rowman. Their motion to approve the pay or salary change for the boat. Good, your second? Any discussion? All in favor, I?
I.
I, both? Here. Three seventy, RC is on Tuesday?
Tuesday. He's been letting me know how many days are left. I don't blame him.
Most guys that are looking to retire.
I need sure somebody else is yelling.
All right. No, look, you're listening, ready?
No.
Okay. Uh, thirty-two, twenty-five health insurance premium rate schedule.
I sent that out to you guys. I just wanted to do something a little more formal. We'll make it.
Yeah, and we've got everything in consideration that we've approved as far as incentives and.
Yeah.
Right, all of that.
Yeah, that would be the January one portion down there. That's how that would affect that.
Okay.
And then we can run it by Assured Partners, and you can get the open enrollment stuff ready to go.
Yeah, their motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five health insurance rate and schedule. I'll make that a motion. For a second, so I can, okay, any others got them? Hearing none, all in favor, I? Both? Here.
Yeah.
Alright. So. Um, resolution. Twenty twenty-four dash zero seven, public hearing of proposed sale of county property. So. Tier Bears of Work County Board of Supervisors proposes to sell and convey the interest of Work County following described real estate. I'm not gonna say what it is because that's a long, that's basically our water tower property just northwest of the casino. Uh, approximately ten acres out there. Um, I think we own seventeen and a half or so. But approximately ten and a half, ten, ten and a half, they'll be for sale. So this is a resolution notifying the sale of that property, uh, shall be held at nine o'clock April first in supervisor's chambers of courthouse here. And this notice shall be published as required by law. Is there a motion to approve written twenty twenty-four dash zero seven?
I'll make that a motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Lower. So maybe, alright, stone. Resolution. Okay, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight is also public hearing concerning the proposed sale received bid, sell and convey the interest of Work County, uh, the same property. It is further resolved that an auction shall be held at ten AM on April first in supervisor's chamber of Work County courthouse. Minimum bid is sixty thousand dollars, sale as is, and no abstract will be furnished. That anyone wishing to submit a written bid by, to do so may do so by delivering the bid to Work County auditor prior to April first, twenty twenty-four. And at ten AM, all bids will be open. Highest bid starting point for the auction, unless that highest bid is less than the minimum bid, in which case the starting bid will be the minimum bid. The successful bidder shall pay a minimum ten percent down and enter into a purchase agreement. The sale to occur within thirty days, including the purchase agreement shall be the required requirement that successful bidder, bidder shall build a building at least fifty by eighty within eighteen months. And failure to complete the same will result in additional payment of twenty thousand dollars to Work County. And that notice hearing shall be published, which is required by law. Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight?
I'll make that a motion.
For a second?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do another roll call vote. Lower.
I.
So maybe?
Alright.
Stone. Okay. Water system improvement project. We haven't gotten a permit yet, so we'll wait to hear that. Uh, I wonder if Echo, you know, on Zoom today? Hello?
I just got a, um, request for information or a customer proposal for, um, pretty large business, so I'm going to submit one location in each of the counties today.
Nice. Push hard for worth, will you?
Yeah.
Um, and you just see, we just got a couple resolutions, so that's kind of the, the timeline for that property out there.
Can I help you? Yeah, thank you.
Okay. You guys have any questions for Melissa?
I don't.
Well, well, yeah, thanks, Melissa.
You bet.
Alright. The EMS continued discussion. Um, you should be getting contacted, Jackie, this week to be on the agenda by a couple of county trustees. Yeah. Um, so that we bring in those to us. Uh, their petitions with all the valuation numbers and that kind of stuff, so. Yeah, we'll, uh, and also be bringing the timeline of how it all plays out, so we'll kind of know where, where it's at, so. We'll see that next week. Uh, people service. Taylor, come on in.
I'll get started off with water, uh, the water plant. We had Vescovo and EP come out to fix. Number one, we had a few chlorine leaks. Now I had to change our head on the chlorine pump. We had a spare, um. We did that, and then a couple of alarm issues at the water plant, false alarms, we're calling out. But we had a programmer come in, come in P and fix that. Waste water plants. We had Waking Left came out and they fixed seven out of the ten lights. Three of them have bad heads.
Yeah.
So he's getting, uh, he's gonna come out and put the heads down sometime here soon, um. And the on-demand water heater at the plant has a leak. So it's out of service, and we had young plumbing, he didn't come out, he had to look at it. So there's a fitting crack, so he's gonna come back out and get that repaired. Um. I think that's about it, other than the regulatory stuff. Still working on getting EP out for the head, headworks room, um. I don't know if we said this last month or not, our last meeting, but they're coming out to put in a radio to communicate from the rotary screen to the lift station. He's just getting a quote right now, but that's a plan, um. Because that's the cause of a lot of the issue with stuff overflowing in the headwork room, getting all over the floor. He's coming out to get a radio directly from the lift station pump to the drum screen to kind of prevent, there's a lag there between the communication. Um, hopefully that fixes that.
Yeah.
Um, but other than that, a budget, and he said people services won't help with something together with you, Jack, when you're coming up with a budget of some sort.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, we're we're kind of in, in the process of working on our water rate increases now, and we've kind of proposed some upgrade, not, shouldn't say upgrades, but capital money into that because we know some more maintenance is gonna be coming, so. As of right now, I think we're doing okay, but if we do, then we'll, we'll reach out to you guys. If we meet, I guess technically we don't have a, have a certified budget on that. Um, so. But if we do, we'll, we'll definitely reach out to you guys. I'm gonna go through that. Uh, air handler? That, on order?
Yeah, that's still.
We're never waiting, but, so.
Contact, and I was like, yes.
That was good. Got any questions or anything for Taylor? Yeah. Thank you very much.
You.
Budget update, discussion, meeting.
I got good work on again.
We didn't get all of our.
Use my people, can you keep it down? We're still adminning.
Yeah.
Got our lobbies all that's posted, so it'd be good. I get the rest tied up, right? Alright, department heads discussion. And uh, we had the meeting of Sarah Gordon County last Thursday. We did come to an agreement in the twenty-eighteen for housing our prisoners down there. That is going to their board of supervisors and for their attorney, and then they'll send me an email. We'll send it to Jeff to take a book over, and then we'll get it to you guys. Um, that's in the words. The only other thing thinking ahead here, and with our meetings, we have every Monday. Um, we talked about when we get to that point, our front office, right now, we run twenty-four seven, where they can come and do gun permits and all that. With one dispatcher in there, they're not gonna be able to do the front counter. So our proposal is to have our front owner open seven to three, seven days a week that people can come in and do. They'll still be for emergency or if they need something from the, from us to report a crime or that will still be available over the speaker phone, and we can bring a deputy up right away. But our front counter to take in gun permits and that will go seven to three, seven days a week. So we'll still keep it open on weekends for those that can get there.
Sure.
Um, so that's kind of our proposal right now on that, and we'd like to start getting that out soon, so by, and we'd like to implement that July one, so. Um, but starting to get that word out so people know this is the hour, then we'll accept those.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Any other department heads?
Um, been working with sheriff on, uh, getting uh, quotes for computer equipment for their cars. Their cars are they're getting to be about six years old, five years older. The computers in there are really having some issues for the deputies, so. Um, got a quote. It's, looks like it to be about a hundred and forty-seven, a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, that's, uh, El Tech coming on site, doing all the upgrades here, uh, over about a week's time span. So they'll, they'll send a, a team of people, and they'll stay up here and, uh, get those things turned through. So I think there's, uh, seventeen vehicles and fifteen computers that we'd be looking at.
Sure.
Uh, then also at the same time, uh, EMA is gonna have their vehicle done. That'd be a separate quote out of their budget. Um, and we'll get a new, in the trailer, we'll get a new radio trailer to handle higher fees. So it'll go from the, the current radios in the cars are four G cellular, uh, they'll go to five P. So they'll get faster performance in those computers and stuff in the cars.
We're the best, right?
Yeah, you can go and get. Um, so we'll be looking to do that this fiscal year here still. We've got that in the budget. Um, I don't know, I don't, you guys don't have to sign off on that at all, do you? Do I need to bring up the quote in at all?
No.
I don't think we ever have.
You can just bring it to us just so we can see it.
Okay.
Um, we don't really have to approve it because it's in the budget, so it's gonna do.
I'll send it, your email that for you.
We've heard the claims.
We've heard the claims.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's happened back though.
Yeah, just good to know this way.
I'll, I'll get it to you guys in email and review that.
Okay. Did you ever hear back from Neapolitan?
Yes, I did. Um, and I got that quote. I should, I have to follow up with them, yeah.
We can.
I'll get that to you guys.
So we can look at it.
Look at that.
For the loaning permit.
Yeah, they were gonna put together.
Alright. Any other department heads? Supervisor Weekly, Enos?
I didn't have any formal meetings, so. Yeah, everything else a little.
Just to kind of had another heavy meeting here with Winnebago Water, Watershed. We were just updating our bylaws, getting that figured out, and we're, we're just, um, updating us filing twenty-eight agree and can set up officers.
With you. Is it?
Winnebago Watershed, I'm just a server.
Yeah, Winnebago, Winnebago River.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like I said, I think eventually you're gonna see that Michelle Rock and the upper seater all.
All together.
What we're, they'll be separate, but work together because they all at the same spot.
Supposed to, there's the bank coordinator.
Yeah.
You know, they gotta, it's getting more efficient because it's just, this.
Exactly.
And then y'all might end up at the same meeting.
No, I would say. Very be, but we'll deal with that when the time comes. I'll be down for a few years, probably, yeah. Um, that'll, that'll, you had more?
That's all I had.
I had, I just had the sheriff's meeting down with, in Sermon County and, um, looks like a very fair twenty-eighteen, and I think it'll be good, and then approval of attorneys and all that, so.
Appreciate all the work.
Other than that, I didn't have any else, so. Uh, really, we need to put on the future agenda? Is there any more extra meetings that you all have invited to? Well.
That was just tentative, so we got everything else done. It just won't get rolling.
Since it's not an actual hearing?
Yep.
Alright, uh, Haley and Grant with Summit. Yeah, Summit Carbon Solutions. Can I give us a little presentation? Also, just want to remind everybody that this is not a public hearing. Um, so public comments um should be kept to zero. Um, they're just presented to us what the project is. If there's any questions or anything, I'm sure these folks will answer them after the meeting. Um, but this is just kind of an introduction of what's going on here, so we're, we want to keep it to that, so. Welcome.
You can have my seat. Thank you for having us today. Let's get this set up here. So I'll start by introducing myself and Grant. Um, my name is Kaylee Langrell. I work for Trankey Logistics. We represent Summit Carbon Solutions, doing primarily the non-environmental permittinging. Um, also a little bit of stakeholder relations. Um, and then Grant Terry is one of our Iowa Pipeline Project Managers. Um, so he's here to kind of help answer any more detailed questions that I can't answer. Um, but really, our goal here today is just to kind of open up this line of communication, introduce the project. Um, and I guess before we get started, um, we would ask if you guys have any questions or concerns that you would like us to hit on during this presentation or um, anything you've been hearing that we can answer for you guys.
I guess you'll bring it up. Time as we come across it.
Yep. That sounds good, and yeah, just feel free to stop me if, if you have a question. So just starting here with our ethanol plant partners. Um, when we kicked off about two and a half year, years ago, we only had about thirty-two ethanol plants. Now with the Poet and Valero partnerships, plus Absolute Energy up in Mitchell County, along with some others in South Dakota, we're up to fifty-seven ethanol plant partners, um, and it does span five states. Um, so once this project is in operations, it will be the largest of its kind. It's not to say it's something new. It, it just will be the largest. So we're gonna start with kind of breaking down, um, the project little by little, and hopefully by the end of this, it'll all make a little bit more sense. So starting off with where is the CO2 coming from? The CO2 ultimately is coming out of the stack at the ethanol plant. Um, our pipeline would, our project would take it and put it into a pipeline where it would be taken up to North Dakota. So for every three pounds of corn, you have about a pound of ethanol, um, a pound of dried distillers grain, and then out of the stack, you have about a pound of CO2. So overview of the project. Um, how this kind of works is in three different phases. At each ethanol plant, uh, we'll have a capture facility that takes the CO2 from the stack and compresses it, puts it into the pipeline where it will be transported. And like I said, this will be the largest of its kind, once it's operational with about twenty-five hundred miles of pipeline, and we do expect it to be operational in twenty twenty-six. So it'll go up to North Dakota, uh, where it will be sequestered permanently underground. The reason why it has to go to North Dakota um, is because they do have that certain porous rock space. Um, by no means an expert on that, but, uh, there is a cap rock that's required to keep it underground. Um, and so that's the reason why we chose North Dakota. There are other places. Um, you know, I know Navigator was looking to go to Illinois, um, to have that rock space, but for us, we chose North Dakota. Um, and then just kind of diving in a little bit deeper to those phases. So again, once we're operational, the CO2 that you see coming out of the ethanol plant today, you will no longer see that. It will be going into our pipeline unless there's some kind of maintenance that needs to be done, or something happens, we can shut the pipeline off, and then it would just go back up into the atmosphere as it does today. Um, so it will be compressed. Uh, the pressure of the pipeline ranges from thirteen hundred PSI to twenty-one hundred PSI, being the highest once it comes out of the ethanol plant, and then slowly going down until it hits a pump station and then jumping back up again. Um, right now in our current phase, I think we only have six or seven pump stations throughout the project. Um, but with us adding this, these new laterals, um, that could go up. Not exactly sure on that yet, but we'll find it out and, and let you guys know. Um, you know, if there were to be a pump station in this county, which I doubt it. Um, but we would definitely let you know. And just to add to that. But we would definitely let you know, and just to add to that, if there was a pump station, that's a, that's different than us purchasing an easement. We'd have to actually purchase that piece of property from the landowner, um, to place up a pump station there. Um, so then again, the CO2 would arrive at the injection site in North Dakota. We do, we have had that site, um, been working on land acquisition up there for a while now, we're at ninety-eight plus percent acquired at that sequ- sequestration site. Um, which is hundreds of thousands of acres up there. So just a little bit more of the process, again, capture, compress. Um, and then once we get to the pipeline stage, it is gonna be a high carbon steel pipeline. You manufactured US steel, uh, with a thickness ranging from point two five zero inches to point six eight eight inches thick. And the system will be approximately twenty-five hundred miles with a diameter range from six to twenty-four inches. I'm gonna show you a map of your county, um, here in the few coming slides. We don't know the exact diameter yet, but since there's only one ethanol plant coming out of this county for this lateral, it's more than likely gonna be six to eight inches, they're pretty small. Um, and then, uh, again, it'll be injected in North Dakota and we have to get a permit through North Dakota for that injection site. And that comes from the Department of Mineral Resources. And here's just a project overview map, uh, this does include the new ethanol plants that we've added with Poet and Valero. So all the blue boxes are the ethanol plants, which will have capture facilities located at them. Um, then the little lines are the pipeline route, and then obviously the gray box up there in North Dakota would be, um, the sequestration site. And I do wanna note with the sequestration site, when we inject the CO2, it will be one to two miles below the surface. So it's pretty, pretty deep, lots of room down there. And then, like I said, here's a map of the county, right now, this is what was submitted to the IUB. So a little pink line there being the pipeline route, and then the gray area around it is the corridor that we're allowed to work within. So once we submit, um, these maps to the IUB, we have a corridor with our phase one of the project, um, we only had one parcel, I believe, on either side of the projected route that we could work within. So this corridor is gonna be a little bit larger, which helps us to work with landowners, so if you know, Joe says, hey, I don't want this on my land at all, I want you to put it somewhere else, I want no part in this. And he owns, you know, with our previous project, if he owned the parcels on either side, there was nothing we could do, we had to try to find a way to make it work. Now we have more opportunity to be flexible. And so we're really happy with that. Um, but again, like I said, probably six to eight inches. I also wanna note, you know, in the beginning, before we finalize this route and submit it to the IUB, we had it coming up from the south, so there was only gonna be a little bit of mileage in your county. But with it coming up from the south, we'd have to cut, cut through the middle of Clear Lake and Mason City. And, you know, that, that could be pretty problematic, we know that area is expanding a lot, so that's why we chose this route to go on the southern portions of the county. Here. So this kind of talk, talks about the, uh, market aspects of the project, so each year, the ethanol industry adds forty-three plus billion, forty-three billion dollars plus to the annual, uh, GDP of the United States, five point five billion, um, in Iowa. And then each year, the ethanol industry supports three hundred and forty thousand jobs, uh, in the US, forty-four thousand of those being in Iowa. And really, the whole purpose of this project is to keep ethanol profitable into the future. Because right now, large buyers of ethanol, the largest buyers of ethanol, um, Canada, California, they're placing regulations where these ethanol plants are gonna have to lower their carbon intensity scores, or they will have to purchase carbon credits. That really puts the burden back on the ethanol plant to say, hey, you gotta find a way to lower these carbon scores. Our project gives them that opportunity and in a efficient and effective way, because we can cut their carbon intensity scores in half. Um, which is gonna lead to other opportunities as well, and I'll kind of get into that a little bit more. Important thing about this slide is we, these are update, or these are, are job numbers for phase one of the project, so these numbers are gonna go up since we've almost doubled the number of ethanol plants on the project. So when we have those updated numbers, I'll get them to you, but it just kind of breaks down that jobs during, you know, construction phase and kind of right now permitting phase for capture and compression and pipeline. And then obviously, once operation starts, there's gonna be less jobs, but there still will be, you know, a pretty good amount for the pipeline and the, the capture compression as well. And we are committed to utilizing local contractors, um, and suppliers where we can. And then again, with the eight billion dollar capital investment, uh, that's important to note, that's not government funding, that's all from private investors right now. Um, government funding starts, you know, when, when we're talking about the forty-five Q, that people like to talk about, that's, you know, after we're in operations. Okay, and then this is a breakdown of the new property taxes that we have estimated for each county, so these are estimates. Um, Worth County is down there in the bottom, this is in alphabetical order, so we do estimate that there will be, um, one point one eight, uh, million dollars um, paid to Worth County a year.
So all that central access.
Correct.
We're gonna, that's portion we get back?
Yes, to the county, so and my understanding is that this estimate is based off of the number of miles in the county, the size of the pipe, and then also the capture facility would add quite a bit to that as well. So that's what we're looking at, again, it's an estimate, and this will decrease a little bit over time, but if you look at counties that have like dapple in them right now, you can see they're still getting a significant amount, so it's not, it's definitely not something I would budget off of, again, because we have to be in operations before any of this starts to take effect, but it's, it's just an idea. So this is talking about our, um, acquisition numbers, so partnering with landowners. Right now, we're at seventy-three percent signed project-wide, seventy-two percent in Iowa. We've always had the goal of a hundred percent voluntary acquisition. Um, it's a very, very hard goal to meet when you have a twenty-five hundred mile project. But the people that we can get in front of, we usually can talk to and come to an understanding with, once they really understand the benefits of the project and the different ways that we can work with them. And, you know, the things that we can negotiate on in the easement. So that takes us to our commitment to the landowners. Um, number one, we wanna work with them, uh, work with community leaders and stakeholders like yourselves. Part of the reason why I come and do these presentations is to get, you know, maybe there's a landowner out there who doesn't wanna talk to their land agent. They can come here from us at meetings like this, or the informational meetings or safety tours that we do. And again, you know, like, we're having our informational meeting here. Um, May second, I believe, if a landowner can't make it to that, they, you know, they can come to one of these presentations and ask questions, um, so that's the goal, we wanna be present. Um, and we wanna be there to, to answer questions and address concerns.
I've got a question on that. May second is dead center of planting for these guys and yells, um, which makes it a little tricky, because they only get so many weeks a year to work. Is there any reason why that meeting couldn't be pushed beyond planting season?
Well, we have to work through the IUB for the schedule. It's a very, it's a big schedule and they have to approve it, and there is a, a timeline that we have to work within. And, you know, I understand there's, in the past, I know there's been, it's planting season, harvest season, it's, something's always in the way. But again, that's why I'm here, that's why I wanna continue to come back, that's why we wanna do other things in the county, and obviously our land agents are gonna be reaching out and talking to people after that meeting, and so hopefully people can find multiple ways to get their questions answered. That informational meeting is really just a, it's part of the process that we have to go through. And there's gonna be multiple, so we'll have one for this county, we'll have one over in Mitchell County. Um, so if they can't make it to this one, certainly everyone is allowed to go to any one they want, it's just if you're a landowner in Worth County, you're gonna get the invite for Worth County. But if you have people reaching out to you and saying, hey, this, this is messed up, I can't make it to that date, to that meeting, let me know and I can get you a list of other uh, days that we're doing those meetings that might be close, that they may be able to attend. So.
So you don't think there's possibility to push it out?
I don't, unless, the only thing that I know is that the IUB could, could change the dates, but again.
IUB provides the final approval, I mean, for phase one, we were stuck with the same situation, but during an actual harvest. Unfortunately.
Definitely unfortunate the way things fall sometimes, but again, we want, we wanna be here and able to answer questions as we can, um, as often as we can. So safety, that's also been a huge topic, um, when it comes to this pipeline, uh, and it is definitely at the core of our company values. We're regulated by FEMSA at the federal level. Um, we're going above and beyond a lot of their regulations, uh, we have, you know, an integrity management plan that we're gonna be following that's very in-depth. FEMSA requires us to x-ray a hundred or ten percent of the wells, we are going to x-ray a hundred percent of the wells on this project. And then you have the three-foot minimum depth that's required by the federal government, we're going a minimum of four foot. Um, we know a lot of drain tile lays at four feet, we're willing to go six. Um, if, but that's something we have to have communication, um, with landowners about, they, you know, we need to know where that drain tile is so we're not hitting it. And then, you know, I think I heard one of our proj- project managers say, there hasn't been a a time when a landowner has requested six feet that we haven't gone six feet. So everything's a discussion, when we hand over an easement, we're not saying, here you go, this is it, we're fully expecting people to take that back to their um, you know, family attorneys look it over, we wanna make sure that it's right, and then it works for both parties. So, uh, and that takes time, so we understand that.
Um, and, you know, like we talked, when we talked before, Matt, we, we are in the process of working on a ordinance based on protecting the counties.
Yes.
Trade district tile and all that stuff, so maybe you guys are aware that um, when it comes across in those, obviously we'll probably be more involved as we're the first team to that, so. We would just have to know every crossing of every
Yep.
possible.
Yeah.
Only tile drainage district.
Yeah, and that's, that's a big effort that we put a lot of emphasis on and we'll work with you on that. And, you know, make sure that we're following your ordinance and but, you know, as far as private tile goes, that's where we need to hear directly from the landowner. Um, and then we're gonna comply with our agricultural impact mitigation plan, AIMP. You guys may have seen this, I think I gave it to some of you, emailed it to you, um, and that kind of tells you step by step how we're gonna restore, um, the land, and that's where your county inspector comes in, so whoever you decide to hire, it's not up to us to give recommendations, you, there's some big companies out there, uh, obviously there's local ones, you can hire whoever you want. Um, and they'll be with us during construction, um, and make, making sure that, that we're following those rules. A lot of people talk about dapple and how, you know, things didn't go so well there, a lot has changed since dapple. These inspectors now have full stop work authority, so if it's too wet outside, they can say, hey, you can't work today. Um, so we're hoping that makes a big difference in in, uh, restoring the land and things like that, so. Move forward, just to talk about safety a little bit more, um, this technology has been deployed at forty-plus ethanol facilities, so like I said earlier, it's not new, it just will be a large project. And then again, we're regulated by FEMSA that's under the federal government. Uh, we are considered a hazardous liquid pipeline by FEMSA. So if you're looking for the regulations, they, they cover everything from design, uh, construction, operations, maintenance, the whole uh, deals, CFR one ninety-five, if you wanna look that up. Uh, more than fifty-three hundred miles of CO2 pipelines are currently operating, and there have been zero fatalities that are from CO2 pipelines. So, I'll address the elephant in the room, I know there's a lot of talk about Sotarsa, Mississippi. It's a different, different pipeline, that was naturally occurring CO2, so there were other chemicals in that besides CO2. Since our CO2 is coming directly from an ethanol plant, it's ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent pure CO2. But we don't wanna shy away from the dangers, there are dangers when it comes to CO2 and this pipeline. The biggest one being the pressure. And, you know, when it comes to that, the most likely incident that would happen, and we're doing dispersion model meetings with, with county officials, and if you guys wanna go to one of those, we'll get more in-depth information that I'm giving you here, but, um, the biggest danger in that is a third-party strike, so someone's out on their backhoe, they hit the line, they think it's a rock, and they keep hitting it, because it's not gonna break on the first hit, so they keep hitting it, and it busts, that's when you're gonna be in trouble because of the, the pressure. Um, not so much the CO2, but CO2 is an asphyxiant, it does displace oxygen, um, but it's, becomes dangerous at much higher parts per million, um, than like anhydrous ammonia or hydrogen sulfide, certainly, so. So I wanna be transparent on the dangers there, but also, you know, note that this isn't the most dangerous thing that's running through the ground right now. And it certainly never than putting eighteen million tons of CO2 uh, a year on the road or in a rail car. Um, you know, pipelines are just a much safer method of transportation, much more reliable. Um, so we wanna use high-quality material and equipment. Prefer to use material that's, uh, manufactured in the United, in the United States when we can. And then we're gonna utilize proven technologies to employ the best industry practices to ensure a project is safe for landowners and the communities that it's running through. So with this slide, I kinda wanna just take it back to the to the beginning, so why is this project important? Right now, fifty-seven percent of the corn in Iowa that is grown is sold to ethanol plants. Like I said, large buyers of ethanol, Canada, California, other states are considering putting in regulations that require ethanol plants to lower their carbon intensity scores, or they're gonna start having to buy those carbon credits. They have to start buying those carbon credits, it's gonna make them less profitable, even some could go out of business. Then, that's gonna have a ripple effect on the prices of corn, the prices of land, and it's, it's gonna have negative effects, we don't wanna say, oh, the sky's falling, you know, everything's gonna go out of business. But it will have a negative effect, where on the other hand, with this project, we can cut those carbon intensity scores in half. And then, you know, we were pursuing this before sustainable aviation fuel was even a conversation. Now it is a conversation, and it's a big one, because we have the opportunity with these ethanol plants being low-carbon to have SAF plants come to the Midwest, specifically come to Iowa. And, you know, create SAF with these low-carbon ethanol plants. Right now, the only plant I know, SAF plant I know of is in Georgia, and they're importing the ethanol from Brazil. So what do, what do we want in America, I think everyone would agree here, is we wanna be ener- energy independent. And we don't wanna be importing something that we already have right here. Um, and so this project is one of the ways that we can get to, you know, hopefully use this opportunity, and we see it as a big opportunity, and we hope, you know, everyone else does as well. Um, and then I guess I should mention, you know, well, who's gonna buy SAF? Well, um, that would be large, uh, airline companies, I know a couple of them have committed to switching over to SAF by twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five. So we gotta start making it and making it quick. Um, and we can do that with ethanol plants in Iowa and Nebraska, South Dakota. That is all I have, but I do wanna reiterate that it is looking like, once, if the IUB approves, we will have that informational meeting here um, on May second, and I'll get you the location and time information. And then I'll try to include some other dates for other counties that are nearby, uh, if people wanna attend those if they can't make it to the one here.
Questions, guys?
Not right now, I guess.
High carbon. Um, sorry, this isn't a public hearing, this is, this is just informational press. You'll have to wait until the informational meeting, so.
Talk to people after.
If you wanna ask these guys a question after we're done, you, you definitely can. I do, just, so when they're putting the stuff in the ground, that's where we get probably eighty, ninety percent of our water. Uh, groundwater sources. What ha- I mean, what happens when they, yeah, it's gonna be a mile, mile and a half deep, but obviously water is probably that deep as well. Is there any science to what happens to the groundwater sources when you pump this amount of?
My understanding is that it's lower than, it will be pumped lower than the groundwater is.
And you're looking at two miles of depth. I mean, it's a geological formation that's porous, and I mean, the, the pressure is eventually gonna end up solidifying that, that gashes CO2, I mean, it'll be remaining in liquid state just due to the pressure that will end up liquefying. That's up in North Dakota.
And there is a lot of science behind it. I'm not an expert in that, but I know there is.
Uh, just, you know, with, with offers that we have, that's all. That's all, I don't know how they they get the knowledge on that, but if somebody has drilled holes a mile and a half to two miles deep. And is able to say, that's what this area of the country looks like in North Dakota or wherever it may be. It just, I know it changes otherwise, if that area was here, it would just go directly under under the state of Iowa, so. There must be a lot of differences in it, but that just concerns me of. You know, eventually, if it hits that water source, if it, if it comes up or whatever it may do, it could still affect the water sources in Iowa, because. Yeah, there's only so many.
Well, I do know, specifically with the state of North Dakota, that they saw this as a huge opportunity. Years ago, and decided to put millions and millions of dollars of research into it, so that they could. Um, you know, regulate it themselves, and so they've done all that research, they've gotten permission from the EPA. To do that, permitting themselves and all the research they had to do before that, um. That a lot of other states have not.
The other reason we chose North Dakota was, one of the questions that I got a lot very early on in the project was, what about capacity? As far as, you know, how long are you gonna be able to flow before, you know, you run out of space, then what do you do? Well. We, we select North Dakota again, because it has of the, what we approximate, two hundred fifty billion tons of storage capacity. That's available. Um, you know, we, we didn't. Lease out the whole two hundred fifty billion tons initially, but we do have that space available, you know, in the event that we need to expand. But put into perspective, with, if we were to flow day one at, you know, our proposed maximum capacity of the line itself. We could flow for a hundred years and use less than one percent of the available space there. So, I mean, running out of space is is not, would not be a feasible argument.
Something else I forgot to mention, um, when I was going through the presentation is. These informational meetings that we're having, um, landowners, whether you're on the active route or not, if you're within that corridor. You will get an invite to that meeting, so just because you get an invite, that doesn't mean that we're planning to to cross your land. Um, that's just what the state requires, so if you don't hear from us after that, it's not that we're ignoring you, it's just that you're probably not on the active route. Um. I'm trying to think of anything else I may have forgot regarding that. I think that's it. Just wanna let everyone know, and we can't start contacting you until after that meeting takes place, so.
After the initial meeting.
Correct, on basic.
As far as their land agents.
Grab them, the landowner. Yes.
That's, that's an I U B requirement. Typically, we'll, we'll have an informational meeting, and at the back of the room, we'll have a team of land agents there. Just for, you know, if folks wanna come back and and look at. I mean, they'll have the maps there available to be able to go in and look if, you know, they are affected by the, you know, our proposed initial route. They won't be able to fully discuss, you know, actual easement and, you know, negotiations until the meeting concludes, but they can discuss that that evening after.
Well, I think there's more to learn, more to come. You guys don't have any other questions?
No, you get one or two, so you're gonna be fine, I'm gonna get to them.
Yep, and we'll do our best, you know, if you want us to keep coming back here, we, we definitely will, cuz we see this as an opportunity to. Kinda talk to people through you guys, we know you're gonna get a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Um, and so we wanna be able to answer those. Um, but, yeah, that's all we have to do.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming in, introducing yourselves, um, we appreciate it. You may get some questions from some of these folks on your way out, so. I guess if you can answer any questions they have, that'd be awesome too.
Yeah, we will.
Go upstairs, I don't wanna.
Yeah.
Just drop the meeting.
Yeah, if you can go, maybe towards that end of the corridor.
Maybe outside level, or yeah, even parking lot, it seems like a nice day out there yet.
Probably.
If the.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. And then, uh, I'm assuming we're invited to that informational meeting. Okay.
It, it's a public meeting, I mean, anyone can attend that hears about it, it just, uh, the folks on the, uh, the safety board are the ones that actually get this.
Yeah, okay.
Essentially, an unlimited time to ask questions, I mean, folks will line up and then. Ask their question and think of another ten questions and keep getting back.
Sure.
It's a good place for information.
Okay, that sounds good, so.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, so, thank you, guys. Good, well. Like, we have to do this agenda, right?
Just.
Did you think of that hay ground?
Oh.
And future, there's anything that needs to be put on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, probably, there is. Um, yeah, so Mike Stevens is interested, um, got it, I know. Obviously, we're working on that, do we? That's far as, uh. Do we foresee it going any more than?
Or, I mean.
Needing to go that route. Needing to cut it.
I don't know how fast the architect stuff works, but we won't, I don't think we'll see any this year, and I'm not. I mean, we're in March, so.
The only, like I've read that, I, I only, I guess I don't think probably will show them, I only would probably would be, you know, since it's kind of foreground. For production, I probably haven't been there, like, even. We were questioning with the price for the year, the season.
Just to make sure that.
Even if you can't get a hay crop.
I'm sure that's pretty light soil there, so.
Yeah.
Everything round, everything round there is sandy.
Yeah.
You know, so I know you'll cross one or five, and right there, across the John Deere, all that sandy and.
Yeah, for production as well, so.
But if we keep, we can go get more, I mean. Hopefully, we can get enough to get a crop or two out to there, I guess, I'm not sure.
Sure, and I, I think for the first year, if it looks like it's gonna be longer term, then we would do the, we have to do the bid thing, I think if we just wanna do it. Just maybe, got, so this way, we're not asking conservation to come in and haul it, because we didn't get something done, and then there, yeah, or we're looking, and. We kinda dealt with that at the interchange.
Yep.
So just to.
Have you got more to?
Maintain, you know, to maintain and.
Yeah, I know, but.
But, yeah, if there's a way to make product, I'll, yeah.
Yep.
But then, are you agreeing to a price, or?
Yeah, Mike said he do, he'll pay fifty bucks an acre. Um.
Well, like I said, except the only, my only exception will be minimum of two moles per year, I mean. He would need a mole at least twice for the year regardless of getting the crop.
Wait, I'll just write that up then?
I would say, probably should.
Yeah, and it's just, I'd say, there's the one year, like I said, if it's gonna be something different, then. We would definitely go off for multiple years after.
Two seasons, I mean.
Right, right, we should, well, we should be building something here.
Should be.
At least have something on the books, though.
Because we're gonna start, we're gonna get the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, we. Too much that, I don't. Yeah. And, I guess, build, okay, finish one, when we, demo blocks or something, I don't know, you know, going down the road, I don't know much you all utilize the website, I guess, but.
Yep. So, I think let's just have Jeff put something together on this, and then we'll prove it with three. Sounds good. Get through this first year.
I believe you.
Yep, do it on a year-by-year deal. All right, did I miss anything else, you guys? I have glasses on you.
I guess another thing I was gonna ask you about is, has any, did anybody talk to Brian yet?
I did, oh, didn't I C C you on that? Last week was not a good, you got sick.
Oh, no.
I C C'd you guys.
Yeah, yes.
And he's gonna get. He's gonna get back to us because he's got seed involved, and then the tillage, or of putting it in, which I totally understood, so I said, get back to us. And, uh, the only thing he did ask about is, because he might have a possibility of being short of hay this year. Cuz he's got another seventeen acres that he got. It's not gonna, this, he's gotta follow up, it's getting pretty bad, he was wondering if there was. If there's any idea, if we had any idea that he might possibly get the first crop off of it. And you sent back a reply on that that said, you know, if things keep going, the spring's gonna be, we could be pulling a crop off at the end of the year.
Yeah, eventually, if we get, if we get rain and we could continue to heat, he could. There's not a chance to do this, but in twenty twenty-six, I made a cut hay right before he was probably, if anything falls on the plate, maybe before he started moving.
Yeah, well, and that would really help him on to get one cutting.
Yeah.
Right, but on the other side of the point, depending on where this fifty by eighty building's going, considering you're looking at ten acres. He might be able to get a second cutting off of that.
Might be five acres out there, yet that he can still cut, I mean, they're not gonna go in and destroy that whole thing, I mean, it'd be, once we sell, it'll be between him and the new owner.
Exactly.
We, we would be out of it.
And we, we still have a few acres that we own.
Well, that.
Right, directly around the tower is not, not.
Right.
Well, even around that, there'd still be a few acres north of that.
And what he rents is sixteen and a half and five and a half of downtown. South, south, down west there, and that wouldn't affect that at all.
Did your road trip?
What's that?
Did your road trip?
I road tripped that, that, hey, looks pretty good.
Oh, good.
And that looks better than what's at the water tower, but that's just me and I don't, I just rode roads, so.
Yeah, so.
That was one of the things he was wondering about.
Yeah, and we can, we can, I can work on that with the, we'll see who actually, who wondering will be, so. But I, I think there would be that opportunity to get some of that out of us. Guess we'll keep talking with him.
Yep, we, yeah, discussed it with the pop, or figure out what possible owners might be, and.
Right.
And then after, you know, after the first cutting, then it's, he can make a deal.
Yeah.
Or buys it.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, there could be a stretch of.
But, yeah.
Couple of years before the next building or so, and then, so there could be five acres there.
Yeah. We can work that out a little bit now, and they'd be more than happy to have somebody to cut to.
Like, say it, keep.
What contract he's got right now with us, fingers are frozen, yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, the seed was a big, I'll help the seed, I guess, it's great.
Yeah. All right, anything else, guys? I'll take a motion to adjourn then. All right, all favor I?
All right.
Bye, folks, meeting is adjourned, thanks, everybody.